All right, well, we can start. Wait, I lost Josh for a second. There he is. Leslie, you call the role.
Yes, all right. Josh Alton?
Here.
Okay, Chris Pugh?
Here.
Mayor Person Lee?
Here.
Linda Rhodes?
Here.
Chad Wando?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, well, we're going to start off with George, if we can, with the work session, so we're not bobbing in and out too many times. Do you want to start the presentation on the capital improvements programming?
All right, we're ready to do that. Leslie, if you can put, we have a slide presentation that shouldn't take too long. And then some of it may be blocked with pictures, but you can change that yourself and clear the picture, the screen if you want to, so you can see the entire slide where it says view options, hide video panel, and then you'll have the whole slide presentation. So if you're ready, Mayor, we'll begin start. We've had, over the past two years, the city council has discussed various elements of our CIP and many of the projects that we've talked about and funded through the issuance of tax or with cash are underway and they're in the process. Summer, the council, if you recall, had a planning retreat and each of the departments of the city made presentations about their operations and most of them had capital projects that they talked to the council about at that time. So this discussion and this work session is really intended to present all of the identified projects that we've been talking about for some time in one place and try to begin the process of setting goals and priorities for those projects and to consider some of the financial mechanisms and the financial options that we have to fund as many of those projects as the council feels comfortable moving forward with. But with that, Leslie, if you go to the next slide, our goals for today are to look at each of the projects or as many of them as we have time to talk about and identify potential funding mechanisms. But I want to point out that the projects themselves and the costs associated with those projects, most of them or a lot of them can really be broken down into three separate projects at least on construction projects, for instance, and on rural construction as well. We usually have a design phase where we're designing the project. We have a right-of-way or land acquisition phase after we get the design done and know exactly what we need. And then we have a construction phase, all three of which have costs associated with them. And obviously, we can't do all of those at the same time and sell them in the same fiscal year. So what we're going to do today is talk about those design projects and show how we've separated them out and tried to identify them. We're going to identify funding sources or mechanisms. We'd like to talk about timing and sequencing and how do we, how do we move those projects through the next five years with the money that we have available from these various sources and the limitations that we have to do the projects. We're going to talk about tax or utility rate impacts that various projects might have and hopefully begin to prioritize in the very near future. And we're going to give you some examples and some recommendations on priorities, but to prioritize the projects over the next five years and then to begin and talk very specifically about the possibility of having a bond election. If you'll recall, after the retreat that we had last summer, there was a good bit of discussion and a desire on the part of members of the council to potentially have a bond election for projects that we could not fund or did not rank high enough or for one reason or another, we firmly believe should go to the public for a referendum on the issuance of general obligation bonds rather than certificates of op, not certificates of octum, certificates of obligation. So we need to talk about some of the nuances of a bond election and specifically, if the council wants to have a bond election for projects that are beyond our ability right now to do without a tax rate increase, when would you want to have that and what projects would you like to include on such a list of projects? So with that, Leslie, the next slide. What we, we have provided in your packet, a very comprehensive list of all of the projects that we've been talking about that are separated by department or by function in some way. And there are about seven or eight pages of those projects that are listed on that spreadsheet. Now, I've chosen this one page out of that whole package so I could just talk for a minute about the format of the spreadsheet itself, maybe in the hopes of making it a little bit easier to understand and grasp. I've chosen this particular page, which is the second page of the street projects in that bigger list. But I've chosen that because it really is a good illustration of those three kinds of, of elements of each project, how we're trying to, to arrange those and sequence them in different years during this five-year period and how, what are possible funding options for how to fund each of those elements of any given project. So that's, that's what this page is intended to do. And so if you let me just explain it a little bit, and again, I don't mean to overs, try to oversimplify this if you've had a chance to really look at it, but I think either the council or the public might get a sense of what we're trying to do here. The first column on your far left is a list of the actual projects, the description or the name of the project. And you can see, for instance, on that very first project that's called Little Road Extension from Kennedale Parkway to New Hope Road, you can see how we've broken it down into those three particular elements, the design and engineering, which if you'll move over to your right and look to your right, you'll see a $669,000 cost to engineer or design that project. And we've put it in year two of this five-year program. The next element is, once we get the design done, doing the right-of-way acquisition. And, and we've estimated the cost of that to be about $890,000. And that would come after the design is done, perhaps in year three. And then construction would be in year four or later, whenever we could determine that we had a funding source to fund the actual construction of that. In this example, in the column to the far right titled Funding Mechanism, we've said the construction might need to come out of a, an election, out of a GO bond election. Or if we were fortunate and the county had a bond election and that project could be included in the bond, in the county's bond program. Once we determine a source of funding for that, then we had now have a, we would now have an estimate of that cost. We'd have the right-of-way acquired, we'd have the design done so that we'd have, be closer to a shovel-ready project when we had available funds to build the project. So each of these projects are, on these seven or eight pages, are organized in that fashion. The project is listed on the left. Then in years one, two, three, four, and five, we've identified which part of the project could be more than likely funded in that year if we determine we want to provide those, that funding. And then there's one column at the far right that's not filled in, and it's called Annual O and M or M and O that's to be determined. And there are some projects that, particularly vertical construction, if you build a, a community center or a police fire building, there could be some other general operation and maintenance costs that we would need to identify so that you and the public know if we build this, there will be some costs associated with that that aren't capital. They'd be incorporated then into the general operating budget of the city. So as we determine which project we might want to go to a bond election, we'd have to determine what those O and M costs and make those estimates. One more thing about each of these pages that I want to point out is the colors because they're, they have a meaning, they're significant in that any of the projects on this page or any of the pages that are highlighted or shaded in blue, either dark blue or a lighter blue, are projects that we, at the staff level, have, have evaluated and would suggest to you would be good projects because of their priority, their high ranking need to fund with the, with the certificate of obligation issues that we could make within the next two years or four years without driving a tax rate increase. In other words, as we retire debt, we can issue up to, and our financial advisors have provided this to council in the past, we could provide or issue up to $14 million worth of certificates of obligation or general obligation debt without requiring a tax rate increase because of what we're paying off each year. So the blue highlighted ones are the ones that for purposes of this discussion, we're recommending should be considered with the use of that $14 million. If you'll move down that page to the one that's highlighted in gray, that's a project that we would suggest the council might want to consider in a bond election. It's, so it, in the far right column over there, it says GO. That's a project that if the council thought it was critical enough to move forward with and we couldn't fund it with that $14 million, we could put it on a bond election and ask the voters if they'd be willing and if they want to have that project and be willing to pay a possible tax rate increase to fund it. It could drive a tax rate increase, and we'll get into more discussion about how much that would be and what's, what would determine whether it needed to have a tax rate increase or not in just a minute. But that's kind of the, the format of the sheet. Those items and projects that are not shaded in any color are projects that we're suggesting to you would need to be done with some other source of funding besides tax-supported debt. That could be through grants, could be through contributions from developers or through cash, the use of available cash, or with the county bond election. There might be other sources that we would go to to fund some of these projects that are beyond paying for with the COs or beyond, and, or that we're not comfortable at this point or give a high enough priority to go to attack an election for. So, or obviously, they could be moved out into the future and considered in the next five-year program after we've developed this one. So that's what the format of the, of those pages in that capital projects total spreadsheet are. We look at the next page, it just kind of summarizes where the projects on this broad list come from. Nearly every department has capital needs of some kind. And every, every department of the city has contributed to this discussion. They've participated in the development of this CIP proposal and get the big picture of what we need, and it's pretty broad. And these projects are expensive, but they've helped with the, with the process of, starting the process of prioritizing based on various criteria. So you can see that the projects we're looking at and that you had in your packet since last week include streets, parks and recreation, water and wastewater, stormwater and erosion projects, some projects in the library and public safety projects, some of which will be suggested as funding with current COs, some with bond election proceeds if voters authorized. The next slide essentially outlines some of the mechan, the funding mechanisms that are listed on these, on this spreadsheet and on these work pages. It includes the potential use of certificates of obligation, which we normally use to fund debt for a number of reasons. And those are projects that simply cities have to do. Issuing COs instead of GOs oftentimes saves us money because we can issue without the issuance costs as much as they are with GOs. But there's certificates of obligation or general fund bonds, general obligation bonds, which require voter approval. The COs do not require voter approval, the GOs do require voter approval. In the last couple of years, the council has authorized the issuance of tax notes. We have some projects underway with the issuance of tax notes. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have other sources of income that might include grants or cash or whatever other sources might become available to us. So with that, and we'll go to the next slide. And again, you guys, feel free to stop me if you want to, I'm maybe talking too fast here, but stop me if you have a question about anything I'm saying. Our debt capacity right now, as I've mentioned, is our financial advisors, and Keaton and I have worked with them and even in the last month or two and talked more about this. But the city now has, because of debt that we're retiring, the ability to issue up to $14 million in tax-funded debt over the next five years without an increase in the debt service tax rate or the interest and sinking fund tax rate. That $14 million could be spent on projects that are either issued and funded through COs or through GOs after an election. Anything above that, any amount above the $14 million in the next five years might require a tax rate increase if they are authorized and the project is authorized by voters. How much that tax rate would be is only a guess and an estimate at this point based on some criteria. If, for instance, the city raises the tax rate one penny, that generates $57,293 roughly and 14 cents in revenue. Now, that's one penny on the tax rate, making some assumptions of what our, our adware value growth is from year to year. Assuming that one cent generating $57,000 is correct, and I think it's very close, the city could issue, in addition to the $14 million, another $15 million worth of projects that would then require, and we'd say to the voters at the outside, more than likely, if approve this project, it could cost you 1.95 cents on your tax rate. And if we wanted to go further than that and do additional projects, and I'm going to show you in a minute what our real need is, I mentioned earlier, it was $90 million just in these projects. We could issue $22 million in GOs above the $14 million in certificates of obligation. And that additional $22 million would cost us an estimated three and a half cents on the tax rate. Now, the main assumption that those numbers make is that we have an AV growth in, from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '25 of 3%. When we originally made that estimate, it was, we think, very conservative, and it may still be because our average AV growth since 2012 has been around 7.3%, 7.4%. Exactly what the impact of some things that have occurred and the whole coronavirus issue and the economy and what that means to our AV growth is yet to be seen. So we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but making some assumptions that 3% is a minimum that we're going to see in our AV growth based on our history. I think these numbers are very accurate. We could, Leslie, if you go on to the next, the next slide, I think illustrates this in a little bit different way. Possible funding for this $90 million worth of projects that are on this list you're looking at could be $14 million from COs with no tax rate increase. Another $22 million in either GOs or COs that would cost up to three and a half cents on the tax rate. And if we did that, as an example, it would still leave $55 million of projects that we have identified that the city is kind of behind the curve on and that we either need or for quality of life issues would, would like to have. It leaves that $55 million worth of projects still unfunded that would need to find other sources or we would need to assume that we're going to move them out and start picking them up in years after this initial five-year program. So $36 million we could fund with up to three and a half cent tax rate increase unless our AV value is higher than we're estimating, in which case it may be less than three and a half. Leslie, go on to the next slide. What I'm, this next slide is going to show you is a picture of, without all the detail, of projects that we're suggesting to the council based on condition of, of the projects, the roads, community interest in these projects that we have indicated and are suggesting you might want to consider as funding is using the first $14 million to fund without the risk of a tax rate increase at all. Now, I'm not going to name all these, you can see them there, Peggy Lane, Beacon Hill, Kennedale, Sublet, and some parks projects that we could fund in that $14 million without a tax rate increase. The council can choose from other projects on this list or from that $55 million that we're not recommending specific funding for to substitute for some of these projects as you get into looking at the individual project. And I'm going to talk just a little bit more on a different list in just a minute about these projects for the $14 million. But what we've tried to do in picking these, we know that everybody doesn't have, set their priorities the same, doesn't recognize the same projects as having the highest priority. So we've tried to take into consideration everything from those projects that public works types of projects that we see as critical and in critical need to those that we consider to be quality of life projects that would improve our, our quality of life in the city of Kennedale and have some mix of those things in this $14 million of funding that could be done over the next five years. Understanding that everybody doesn't look just the same, and that's why we're here, is to get this out on the table and see if the council generally agrees with the priorities that we've tried to assess based on conversations we've had with you for the last two years. The next slide, General Obligation Bonds. Clearly, council, as we said after the retreat last summer, talked about the possibility of having a bond election. So if you wanted to fund projects beyond those that you believe take the highest priority and for which there is the greatest need to use that $14 million, you could call a bond election. Fund some projects beyond $14 million for the public safety building, the design, the land acquisition and/or the construction. We could fund some additional street projects with that. We could fund some additional park and recreation improvements that the Park and Recreation Board has been talking about and which are not all included in the $14 million that we've outlined. There are other library improvements beyond what are in the $14 million. So if you wanted to fund more than the $14 million over this next five-year period without, without waiting until another program, we could do it through a bond election, and we just need to determine the size of that. We'd also need to determine, obviously, when to have it. Leslie, if you go to the next slide. Mine's a little messed up on the screen, I hope you all can see that real well. But again, $14 million, if we had a bond election, we could do up to $22 million in GOs with a tax increase of three and a half cents. Or we could cut that in about half and do $10 million worth of additional projects, which would about cover the cost of the public safety building in, with general obligation debt. And that would add about 1.75 cents to the tax rate. Again, assuming what we think is a very conservative growth rate between 2021 and 2024 of 3%. So we can, we could still structure some of that issue so that we're only issuing the debt in the first five years for the design and land acquisition of a project and minimize that, that tax rate even more. But roughly thinking for purposes of our planning here, we think these numbers, three and a half cents for up to $22 million in GOs and 10, 1.75 cents for up to $10.5 million in general obligation bonds. Now, the next slide doesn't go into a lot of detail about water and sewer projects, although all of these that we've been talking about, water and sewer and stormwater, are all included on that big spreadsheet. Some of them with funding options identified out of the Water and Sewer Fund, out of Stormwater Funds. They too could be funded with debt. But we need to recognize that if we fund any of these water and wastewater projects beyond the, I mean, any of them at all, the $14 million without a tax rate increase essentially is for general fund types of projects. If we want to do additional water projects, we need to make sure that we have the capability to pay the debt service for those projects out of our current reserves or out of, that they're sufficient there to pay the debt service on revenue bonds. It's possible and, and likely a good idea if we wanted to issue some COs for water and sewer projects. We could do that rather than issuing revenue bonds because that would save us some money. But the debt service for those COs would still need to be paid for with water and sewer revenues and not with a debt obligation, not with a tax obligation. So we could issue, instead of $14 million worth of COs, do $16 million worth because we had $2 million in water projects we want to do. But that portion of that CO issue, we need to understand would have to come from water and sewer revenues, either what we're, either that we sufficiently have now or can cover with our existing rates, or determine that we needed some rate increase to pay for that. That we haven't evaluated in full detail at this point, but the concept is there, and I hope you all recognize the difference and distinction. Leslie, I think the next slide, hopefully, is that, is the slide that really, if you took, if the council looked at the broad seven or eight-page list of all projects and took the ones that were shaded in blue, that we're suggesting to you, this is and took the ones that were shaded in blue, that we're suggesting to you, this is a list for you to react to, to modify, but this is the list of projects that in the staff's opinion would be good candidates for use of the $14 million that we can issue without a tax rate increase. It totals just under the $14 million. Some of those numbers will change as we get into the five-year program because costs change. Uh, but these are, we think, pretty good estimates of what the cost, incremental costs of each element of these projects would be. So we have a list here, and it's in your package. I think it's about the sixth or seventh page of that list. It just isolates the blue highlighted projects that we're suggesting to you is a, is a good list, at least to start from, for projects to spend the $14 million on. The next slide is then a list of projects, if you look at that entire list, that are shaded in gray and that we think are very worthwhile projects. Some of them are very important, uh, and in, including a police fire facility, it includes some streets, some additional work at the library, and the streets that are, we consider to be in pretty critical condition, that are, are projects that are good candidates for the council to consider putting on a bond election. And if you did that, these that we listed here total over $21 million. And the voters, the public could vote on those and tell us whether they want to proceed with these or not. And we'd, again, be able to tell them that you could do this for about a three and a half percent, a three and a half cent increase with the hope that values come in better than we've estimated here, and it would be less than that. But they need to know the outside possibilities going into an election. Now, talking about an election and when we would have that, um, that's another issue too. When we left the, the retreat last summer, we started talking about a lot, a bond election for either last May or this May or this coming November. Obviously, a number of things have changed. Uh, it's now obviously too late to call a bond election for this November, and it would be difficult to imagine successfully doing that when things are as up in the air as they are with the economy and the coronavirus issues. But I think it is very possible that the council could consider an election next May when we've had time for a citizens committee to vet some of these projects, to work on a campaign for such an election, uh, and we could refine some of the projects, and it'll give council time to first to get a priority list of theirs and determine whether or not you want a citizens committee to do. But essentially, a, an election next May, I think is very possible. Uh, the coming months and the economy in the coming months and what happens with COVID could have an impact on that. But I think that's the earliest, clearly under the law right now, that we could consider another bond election. And, but I think some discussion about the political reality of having a successful election in May is something we need to have. I know that, and you are aware, that if we decided to call a bond election for this or any of the projects, and if those, if that election was successful or any element of it was successful, we could proceed with those projects. And if we had to, we could raise the tax rate for debt service to pay for. But if those projects were to go to an election and fail, and for instance, let's just take the police fire building, and that might be the one that be most likely to, to pass, but because we have such a need for it. But if it failed, we could not find another source and fund that same project through the issuance of COs for some period of time. And I'm sorry, I don't remember whether it's three years or five years, but it may, it would put that project on hold for some period of time if it went to an election and failed. So with, with that, and I hope I didn't go through it too quickly, it's a very comprehensive list of projects and funding and portions and elements of different projects that we've tried to be realistic about when they could be accomplished if the public wanted them done. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to take questions. Uh, if I can't answer them, we have other staff, Lakita, Larry Hoover particularly are here to talk about the specifics of any of these projects and any of the debt questions that might come up. And we can obviously schedule additional meetings and work sessions on these specific projects anytime the council wants to do that. So I'd like to open it for questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any questions, you're all muted, so you have to unmute before you ask a question. Chad?
No, no questions, at least not yet.
Josh?
No, but I sure would like to meet in person and have like a work session about this.
George, when do you think the next time we'll meet in person will be?
Well, Mayor, I really think that's the council's call. I'm, I'd be reluctant to do it anytime in May and, uh, at least until the end of the current, uh, disaster declaration and until we see how things. And I clearly understand the economic issues and questions. We seem to be providing services pretty well this way, and I don't think it's a, it's a compelling thing that the city, um, invite people to closer assimilation with each other, but we can do it at the council's request and try to accommodate it best we can. I would certainly suggest not before June 1st.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Senator.
On the Winding Creek erosion, we have Pennsylvania in blue and Briar Court in gray. Uh, why is that? Is one worse than the other or?
Larry, do you have a comment on that?
I do. When the study was performed by Hafen Associates, Pennsylvania was the number one project that affected the most infrastructure. It affected the roadway, the water and the sewer infrastructure in that area. So that was deemed the most critical, uh, project and was considered number one.
Okay, but Briar Court, is that over there by Creekside, the part that runs behind Creekside?
That is, yes. It's number two on that list.
Right, but I was just wondering why we have one in a CO and the other one in a GO, because if the GO doesn't pass, then Briar Court will not get, uh, fixed, right?
Well, um, that was done in order to get a, a sample of projects together and a certain number of 14 million. So if council deems that they want to move that up and may move something else out, as George mentioned earlier, you could certainly do that. That is something we could consider.
Okay.
Mayor, I have, I have a question along those same lines for Larry.
Okay.
Larry, are those, are these erosion projects, and you kind of touched on it, are these erosion of private property? Are these erosion issues of roadways? Cause I have some personal feelings about those projects depending on what erosion issues we're talking about spending tax dollars on.
These two projects listed on this list are projects that erosion affects infrastructure. And, and in the process of fixing that, we're also, uh, protecting some private property because it's proximity to the infrastructure that it's protecting.
Okay, thank you.
So George, in other words, going back to Sanders' point, is that we could have a meeting and we can rearrange some of these priorities depending on what the council wants to do?
Uh, absolutely. This is, this is a recommendation specifically for the 14 million and a potential bond election from our perspective, based on our information and input, knowing that the council needs to tweak it in any way they think is appropriate, just understanding the dollar limits and what the caps are and the limitation.
Linda?
Clearly, you could go above $22 million if you determined all of these projects were important, but every time you go above that, it goes above three and a half cents on the tax rate, so.
Linda?
Yes, my comment is, well, first off, very impressive charts, good information, easy to read. Thank you to all the staff. I know that, that took a while to put together. Appreciate that. Um, my comment would be, I would like for council to consider maybe switching out the call it sublet, uh, item that's listed in gray with the Linda Road Extension Project listed in blue. Um, the reasoning behind that is I feel like we need to focus in on our existing streets prior to any extensions. Um, but I'm sure there was a reason why we put it in blue, but if you look at the dollar amounts, they're pretty comparable. So as far as staying within the budgetary limits on the 14 million, I think we'd be good on that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, like I said, like George said, this is just a general view, so we can come back, uh, hopefully in June and sort of all agree where we want to spend that money.
Okay.
Have some consensus. Uh, George, I got a couple of questions and some for Drew. Uh, first off, uh, what would be the deadline the council would have to make a decision on whether or not to have a May GO election? What's the deadline on that?
Let me, Leslie or Drew might have a better answer for that. I mean, it'd be when, it'd be the same timeframe of when we would call a general May election for electing city council members. The issue is backing up from that if you want to have a bond committee, election committee, give them time to work and so forth. But calling the election would coincide, I think, unless Drew stops me here, would coincide with the same dates we'd call a municipal election.
That's correct. I don't, I don't know the date off the top of my head. I know there's a statutory window. I'm trying to look that up, but yeah, it would be on the same, same day as your general election.
So some, sometimes between mid, I mean, you have to do it by the end of February, at the end of the filing period, and then I think it's the March meeting we call the election.
The election's either called in mid-January or mid-February. I can't remember which one.
Well, you sign up in mid-January.
Right.
You have a month to sign up. So.
Should I leak this presentation up or we?
Hey, Dan. Um, and then, uh, would you list the GO election all as one package or would it be separated in individual packages?
No, I would, I would, you would separate it into the public safety projects, street and road projects, park projects, and, and let voters choose individually on those projects.
And if they chose individually on those products, I mean, you had 22 million at 3.5, but they may not have pretty well at 22 million.
Absolutely, that's correct.
And, uh, Drew, so, you know, you'll have some people say that, well, why don't you just put them all on a GO and let the voters decide? Well, you took some needed objects, needed repairs, and you put it on a GO and it was defeated, what would be your option to fix that sewer line or that street at that point? Or that might be the key answer, I don't know.
Well, if you don't, you don't issue debt, then the money's got to come from somewhere else if you don't have it.
Right, but you can't go get a CO after you got defeated for a GO.
That's my understanding. I would verify that with bond council. But if...
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's correct, Mayor. I just don't remember the time limitation, but there are some restrictions on how quickly you could come back and issue debt in another form. You could pay cash, but you couldn't issue debt in another form. And I'd qualify that as saying I'd also like to verify that with bond council.
Lakita, do you have an idea?
It's at least three years. So it can range from three years to five years, but you can't do anything that the voter, if they voted it down, you can't do anything with that, even if you have room for COs, you can't do anything with that, uh, with those specific projects for at least three years.
So in other words, you use COs for things that you absolutely have to get done. Otherwise, you're going to delay them for three to five years and they're going to deteriorate further?
That's right. Your, your, Mayor being, yes, if we've got something that needs to be done, you run a real risk by putting it on a GO bond election when you don't really have much choice about doing it.
And then, last, George and Lakita, I can answer this. You talked about revenue bonds versus COs and that COs will run a less expensive interest rate typically. Why is that?
Mayor, can you repeat that?
Yeah, usually, uh, you said that revenue, George said revenues, I mean, COs are cheaper than revenue, uh, bond, usually because of the interest rate. Why is a revenue bond a little more expensive?
Well, I'm sorry, Lakita can respond. What I, and what I think is correct is that revenue bonds, because they're not tax-supported, generally will, will result in a higher interest rate, but there are other issuance costs for revenue bonds or general obligation bonds that you don't experience when you issue COs that also saves money.
Yes, that's correct.
Do, do people still issue revenue bonds knowing this?
I'm sure there are some issued, but, um, I know that I've experienced where utilities issued COs recognizing that it's the revenue from the utility that's obligated to pay it, but the savings that the utility gets from using the general fund's ability to issue those can result in some payment to the general fund from the utility from those savings. So everybody benefits from it and the money is kept within the city, uh, organization. But I'm sure there are revenue bonds issued and it depends on the size of projects.
I, I want to go back to what Sanders said, is that it's that time we start building some things, uh, and we just need to narrow down the projects and we go back to what Chad said a while back, a little bit two years ago, that the deferred costs, that the longer you wait, the more the cost goes up. So George, we have another talk about this. So we can start narrowing down our prioritizing the projects and move forward.
Well, I mean, we can do this, again, at the council's direction. Let me suggest that, I mean, Linda has made a suggestion on a couple of projects. If some of you feel strongly about other projects, if you drop Lakita our, and note, we could kind of reorganize some things and see how it's in there. And then if we can get back to council at sometime in June or late June and talk about, here's a refined list that we would suggest. Again, when you go to, if you go to a bond election and you have streets on there for X, for $10 million and then you, and those are successful, it could be, I mean, they'll be on the ballot as street projects. It's possible that things will change, use that funding for a little bit different project, street project than it was on the ballot for, but it'd have to be restricted to streets and roads. So they're, depending on what happens in the world, um, that can change. But if you can send us any comments you have from this presentation, it would help us be ready for the next discussion that we might be able to have in person.
Well, Mayor and George, I, I have no qualm saying, I, I believe the public safety building is very important. I think I made the comment last meeting, think about where you were in 1986, and that's when that fire station was built. And the police station is a little newer, but they certainly have needs. I, I think when we're talking about that amount of money, I, I think that needs to be put up to the voters. I, I don't want to commit nine million of our 14 million available monies for that project, but I think that it needs to be on the ballot, and I think it's very important. And, and I would encourage all the members of the council, if you haven't been to those facilities, to go get a tour and see what those men and women, the conditions that they're working in, whether it's crowded conditions, whether it's outdated facilities or both. Um, I, I feel very... I, I feel very strongly that the Public Safety Initiative building needs to be on the ballot for a G O bond and let our citizens decide how important that project is to them. That, that's what I, I'm just, that's probably the most important thing to me of the bond related projects would be the public safety facility in, in some form, whether it's the start with the basic building and maybe we can save some money somewhere and add some of those additional facilities that the two chiefs have said are important. But that's my two cents on it is, is that public safety building is, is critical for the growth of our community down the road.
Any other comments?
Now, I agree with Chris. We need to make sure that we get that on the ballot so we can go ahead and get that vote in so we can get started on that public safety building.
And Sandra, I'm with you from last month. You said, let's get some things going. You know, you and I have sat through endless lists like this and have accomplished few items.
Right.
You know, my commitment in whatever my, is left of my term, whether it ends in November or not, I will come to the meeting in June or July and I will make a vote with everyone and come to a consensus on what needs to be on the bond and what needs to be out of the available funds. And I want to move forward. I don't want to just keep talking about it.
Right.
So whatever month we decide, June, July, when we can meet in person, I agree with Josh, I'd like for us to meet in person and talk. And I want to make a vote and I want to move forward. I, I don't want to meet on this for six months and do nothing again. It just, just makes me sick. I'm sorry to be that way, but I sat through too many meetings of these lists and I don't know that I've seen more than one project or two off of all those lists done. Larry Hoover has made a tremendous effort to put together a list of street projects that essentially 95% have gone unfunded and undone. And, and I don't want to do that anymore. I want to do what we need to do to get some of these things accomplished and these large projects, let's let the voters make a decision and then we'll deal with that decision when it's made and support it.
Right.
And Drew, just to make sure that once we approve a bond election, council cannot take a position on it, is that right?
Well, council can take a position on it, but you can't use city funds to advocate for or against the measure. So, so council members on their own can take a position for or against the measure. But when you're using, you just can't use city funds to do it. So, I mean, that can be, that can be as simple as using paper from the copier in the copy room at City Hall. But city council members in their individual capacity on their own, they can, they can advocate for or against the measure.
All right. Any other questions about the bond? All right, George, I'd like to get us a quick discussion on the scheduling of fees. Can we have a quick discussion on that? For individual consideration?
I'm sorry, you want to have a discussion about the fee schedule?
Yeah.
That's fine. Those involve several departments. Melissa was going to kind of lead the discussion. Don't we have a? Hold on just a second. Mayor, where is that on the agenda?
It's item F1, F1.
Okay. Okay, that's an item for individual consideration. Right, you want to do that before you take the rest of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a question or did you want just a brief summary of it?
I want a brief summary.
Melissa, can you do that?
Yes, so you guys approved a number of changes a few months ago for planning and development fees. We have gone through the various staff and different departments have gone through the fee schedule to basically do several things. One is to update some of the language. For example, fathom is mentioned in it. Try and clean that up and to just clean up unnecessary and repetitive wording. But, and then there's a couple of other things like we added the park dedication fee on, on there. For example, that's not a new fee. We just added it so people can see what it is. But the biggest thing I think is to, our attempt is to recover the costs of the city on various things. Fire department, for example, and the, the tasks that they do, many of them, there is no charge for at all. There's some fees that, for example, developers pay specifically the tap fees, sewer and water tap fees where we have a set rate and the developer pays that rate. And if the cost is more than that, Arlington charges us for that. So the taxpayers get to pay for that essentially. So we wanted to change that to whatever the actual cost is. So a few changes that kind of fall in line with just updating and cleaning it up and also recovering the city costs on the various fees. We have staff here from the different departments if you have specific questions.
Mayor, there's not been a comprehensive overview of our fees in, in some time. And this is an effort to do all of them at once rather than piecemealing some of those and bringing them up to current fees and costs. There will be some that we still need to come back to you with because of our, our planned conversion of our customer service to Arlington. And there are some fees with regard to water utilities that need to be, and we've said to Arlington, we would adopt the same fees as they have for those same things. But it just takes more than, we need to do a better comparison than we were able to do for today. So those water and sewer utility fees that we'll need to start collecting and be the same as Arlington's, we'll probably come back to you in the next 30 to 60 days and with one more amendment to this fee schedule.
All right, any questions? Sandra?
Uh, no.
Chad?
No.
Josh? Josh?
No.
Linda?
I have one question and it would be under the library services. For the rental of the facilities, because I've rented, you know, both before, the one at the library called the community center and then also the senior center facility. There's, there's a new sentence in there or provision that says they want you to start your rental whenever the libraries open. And I know used to, that wasn't on there. You could just go pick up the key at the police department. With it being restricted now to only when the library opened, I think that might kind of hurt some of the revenue, even though the revenue's not probably grandiose. But I personally don't want that little clause in there, but I want to hear from staff to see what the reasoning was. Because it could be, you know, very valid reasons why.
Hi Linda, actually, we've always required that if you're going to have your event in the community center, you have to pick up the key and start your event while the library is open. We don't let people pick up the key at the, at the department. Maybe you, I mean, you may have because you're a council member and stuff, but in general, we don't let the public go and pick up a key at the police department. So it's just an addition that we've always done that we just haven't had written in there.
Okay. Can they pick up the key early? Like, could they?
Yeah, they can pick it up that day. Anytime earlier in the day, they can pick it up. But they can't start their, they can't start their activity. Well, speaking of community center specifically, because we don't issue keys to the community center unless it's somebody like us, like somebody who has a staff connection such as a staff member who we vetted or a council member. That's part of the reason why they have to come in and pick and, and be there when we're open. Now, for the senior center, the senior center is different. The senior center, they can pick up their key anytime earlier. We do issue keys for that facility. There's a little bit of a difference there. But anything in the community center, they have to come into the building and be there at, say, 4:30 if we close at 5:00. So that we have to close down the facility, but we don't issue them a key.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Chris, any questions?
Um, no, sir. Thank you.
Chief Brown, they said that we were going to, an attempt to recover some fees through the fire department. What fees are those?
Uh, there's, there's a variety of different fees. In the past, we've had approximately six fees that we, we assessed. You know, one thing we do in every building throughout the city, we do an inspection on those every year. It's a life safety inspection that we do. To date, we've never charged for any of that. Going forward, we're wanting to capture some of that revenue for the work that we do on those. There's some other fees on building construction and inspections. Example, if the hotel up on the corner were to come through, there's the inspection fees after a building has been built. So our fires inspectors will go out, depending on the size of the building itself. There's an inspection, inspection fee associated with that. So there's just a variety of fees that pretty much every city around us is compensated for that we just never have reached out and tried to collect.
Okay. All I need to know. Any other questions for anybody?
So Chief, so we're basically just trying to stop taxpayers from subsidizing by charging the people that are actually having those inspections done.
That's absolutely correct.
And then I did have one question for Chief Brown. I saw some fees in there for the different types of fire equipment. Is that related to the ordinance we passed previously about billing the insurance companies for equipment on scene?
It, it is not. Some of that is, though, within some of the stuff that we're able to do. If we had somebody that wanted to do a, so a lot of big construction, if they have to come in and remove a lot of trees and stuff, they can file for an ordinance to do what we call a trench burn, okay? They, they'll dig a big long trench, 10 foot deep, 10 foot wide, whatever length that's required. And they'll burn that stuff. Well, from that instance, we want to have our personnel out there managing that to make sure that that fire wouldn't get away. So that would be one example of what that would be.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions? And George, just real quick, last thing, can we talk real quickly about the stormwater drainage fee?
Sure, let me ask, that's a fee, obviously, Mayor, that we've talked about every year since I've been here and was originally implemented with the intent of raising it each year and that's not been done. The council, when you adopted your budget this year, adopted a budget that was partially supported by an increase in the stormwater fee. And let me ask Lakita to give you some specifics of what that is. But it's trying to play some catch up that we haven't done in the last several years.
Right, we've included in the report some sister cities and what they currently charge for residential drainage. We did budget the additional revenue for fiscal year '20. We budgeted about an additional 38,000 based on 3,200 utility accounts. And we realized that we're kind of late in the game in the year. We thought that we would have implemented by March. But due to COVID-19, we have it on the agenda this evening. We still hope to be able to reap about 13,000 worth of additional revenue. You know, as you can see, $3.50 is, is pretty cheap. If you stack it up against what some of the other cities are charging and if you're looking at a lot of the drainage and erosion issues that the city needs to address, I believe that it's appropriate to bring forward at this time and at least consider raising it by $1.
Lakita, do you know when the last time it was actually raised at all?
I believe it was 2014. Leslie may have to correct me there, but I believe it was 2014.
So several years would be a fair answer.
Yes, yes. And then also, the last time that it was looked at, as I understand it, Larry and I had some conversations about it. There was an intent for that council at the time to go and review it each year and possibly add 50 cents on it each year so that we could at least be along the same lines as some of the other cities. And, and that has not been done, as I understand. And so we're just trying to kind of play catch up here and at least raise it by the dollar, but not something that's, that's too extravagant to where, you know, citizens would be alarmed during this critical time, so.
You are correct. It was October 2014.
And Lakita, I think you said the answer. You said, so if it was successful tonight, we're only going to gain about a third of what was budgeted?
Yeah, if it's successful tonight, what we'll do is we'll start it on June 1st and we will still collect about 12,800 between June and September 30th.
Thank you.
Any questions for Lakita? Chad, Josh? No. Linda?
Not for Lakita, maybe just a comment. I was wondering how council would feel about, provided that we approved this ordinance, to have a provision in there to keep the disabled rate at the current 350. I mean, it's just a way to look out for seniors and disabled again. We're not going to lose that much money by not raising theirs. We're not saying don't bill them at all. We're just saying don't increase it a dollar on that one. I'm just wondering some feedback on that.
I think that's a great idea because right now the seniors are struggling to feed themselves. So even $1 a month would make a difference to them. So how much money do you think we would lose by leaving the seniors at 350?
I would have to look at exactly how many seniors we have. I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't know if the council will be willing to consider it, but for the purpose of this ordinance, it would increase by a dollar for every residential and religious organization. Now, what we can do after that is we can go and look at the senior discount program that we have in place and we can consider modifying that to reconcile that dollar for the seniors.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we could actually make a motion to approve it by amending, revising the wording of the current ordinance to include that. We could actually do that tonight and Drew could get that corrected and sent over to Leslie.
Yeah, and one, one concern I have about potentially providing different rates between a residential area, residential classes, you know, the ordinance, the ordinance in the state statute says that, you know, all similar service areas need to be treated equitably and kind of on the same plane. So I, you know, unfortunately, right now, I don't know, I don't know if we could do that. I mean, we can do that.
I'm not sure if we can do that either, Linda, because we have very strict posting requirements that have to be done. And actually, when we post and advertise for this, it has, it's very strict. It's a very strict rule. And we actually almost have to post the whole ordinance when we go and notify citizens that we think that this is coming forward. So I'm not sure if you, if we need to modify anything with the ordinance. I would be more comfortable on the back end if we come back and modify something with our own. Because our senior discount is our senior discount. We can go in and we can, you know, we can modify that. We can reconcile the dollar someplace else. I'm just not sure if we're allowed to do anything with the ordinance. And the fee itself and how we, I'm pretty sure you have to apply it to everybody in those categories.
We have to do the adjustment again through the council motion at a future meeting?
For the senior program?
Yeah.
It depends on how it was implemented. I'm not sure how you all put it in place. If it was, if it's an ordinance, then yes, it will have to come forward. If it was just a program, I'm not sure.
Well, if it's an ordinance, could we just have a virtual meeting next week to fix it before fall into June anyway?
Leslie, do you know if it was, if the senior program is an ordinance or if it's?
I believe it's ordinance.
I believe it's ordinance.
I believe, I believe there's an ordinance that sets a, a discount for both water and wastewater. And I'm, I'd be surprised if it doesn't need to be adjusted by council action.
And we could do that by next week? Couldn't we?
I think what we can do is, uh, what we, what you all can consider is, for the purposes of this evening, uh, we can adopt the ordinance as written at this one as it is, and then we could bring forward, um, the senior ordinance or the verbiage there and have the council to, uh, consider updating it to reconcile for the dollar. Maybe at a special meeting or, um, some future meeting before we implement it on June first. I mean, if all else fails, if the council desires, once we implement the ordinance, I can go in and, um, have Uni-Billing to do a dollar, um, credit for every senior so that they won't experience, they'll experience the four fifty on the front end, but they can, um, the city can eat the dollar on the back end until the council has time to go and consider updating the senior ordinance.
Is everybody okay with coming back and amending the senior ordinance? Or having it on the agenda, anyway?
Let's, let's put that on an agenda for next week, assuming we can get an ordinance drafted and identify what accounts it applies to. We can try.
That might give Drew a time, a chance to make sure that we're legal in doing that. And of course, be sure that we're within that realm, too.
Are you okay with that, Linda?
Yes, thank you very.
Sandra, you okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, everybody else fine? All right. So, uh, anyone else have anything on the agenda that they want to talk about? I think we've hit everything except for the executive session.
Mayor, have you done the consent agenda?
Uh, no. Is there something on the consent agenda you want to talk about?
No, I mean, we have the interlocal CDBG agreement.
Right.
Make sure we're not going to back out of that. We've got extension of your local disaster, the appointment of the city municipal court judge, uh, and of course, the minutes are all on, on the consent agenda. There's one, and the encore item, so I just want to be sure we get those done. If you were, if you intend to come back to them, that's fine.
I, I do, because we, we're just on a work session. I, I do have a, I do have a question about the judge. You know, a lot of cities, the, the judge will come in and meet with the council. Um, we should probably have Judge Lane do that. I, I've been here for a long time. I don't know if I've ever met him.
Well, can we discuss that?
Yeah.
Uh, I was hoping that we can, uh, change judges, change Judge Erin Jackson. You know, she's a citizen of Kennedale. I mean, she's a veteran. Um, we have these signs out here in Kennedale that say, "For the love of Kennedale." And so, at some point, we're going to have to start showing citizens the same love that we expect the citizens to show us as a city. And we have so many resources in Kennedale that we're always going outside to get help for. So I think we need to start using our citizens for some of these positions. She's already a municipal judge. She's an advocate in the Texas National Guard. I mean, she's qualified to do it. At what point do we start saying, hey, you know, let's start using the citizens of Kennedale for some of these positions?
Yeah, George, how does that, when we work, do people, I mean, do, I mean, let, let's just say that Judge Lane retired. How do you go about bringing in a new judge? Or if you're going to change judges, how do you go about doing that?
Well, I mean, that's a council-appointed position, obviously, and it's, it's a position that, in my opinion, needs to be, and maybe by all Drew can answer, needs to be an attorney. And I think the council, if you want to change judges, then I think you could bring in candidates for that. Uh, ask for applicants for it, interview them if you'd like to, and then determine who you'd like to have. Now, I'm, I guess this is, I wasn't aware that there was an interest in doing that, and we certainly had no objection expressed to Judge Lane. So, uh, I think this is a council call, whether you want.
Well, I don't, I don't have any, uh, I don't, it's not that I don't like Judge Lane, like, I've never met him. I'm just saying at some point, we have all these people living in Kennedale that can be feeling some of these positions, but we're always going outside and taking our tax dollars and giving to people outside of Kennedale. So if we want the citizens to support what we're doing, we need to start supporting some of these citizens. And the fact that when her house was flooded, uh, I mean, she put out a lot of money herself. And this is a way for us to help her get some of that money back without taking it from.
So, George, can we, uh, delay this action and say, and Drew, do we have to oppose this? Or we can, what?
I guess my, my understanding is, and I may be wrong, and for Drew, but that his current two-year appointment expired, would expire at the end of May, but that he would consider, continue to serve until a replacement is appointed by the council. So if I'm correct in that, you would not have to act on it.
That's correct.
I got a question.
Yes, Josh?
Uh, having a judge who lives here within the city, cannot be in conflict of interest, for example, say her neighbor goes to court, how does that work? I, I would think that's why we have a judge that's out, that lives outside the city limits.
But that's why we have associate judges. So if something comes up like that, because I'm sure Judge Lane knows some people that he's seen in court. So, I mean, I don't see why that should be an issue.
Well, I'm just asking a question. I'm curious, I don't know, so.
Yeah, just, just because a judge lives in Kennedale doesn't mean there's some inherent conflict of interest. A conflict of interest, whether, whether a judge should or should not recuse him or herself is really on a case-by-case basis.
Got you.
So, am I, am I hearing any, uh, any objections to postponing this item and interviewing applicants?
I think it's a great idea. Why not?
Well, let me ask you a question. Do, can we not just appoint her? Like I said, she's already associate municipal judge at Arlington, so it's not like she doesn't have the credentials. I mean, she's a judge advocate for the military, uh, so why can't we just appoint her and take a vote on it? And if we turn her down, we turn it down, but at least we, do we have to go through that process?
Well, I think it'd be good, though, if, if everybody had a chance to meet her uh, and, and talk with her, because we've only seen her in one context, uh, and she wasn't happy with it.
The reason why I'm laughing because nobody's met Judge Lane.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
My concern, Sandra, would be what if she's in, what if she's a JAG on the fourth Wednesday of the month? Now we have to rearrange our entire court schedule, so I'd like to at least see if she's available. I'm not opposed to talking to her at all, but I want to make sure that her schedule meets the established schedule we have. People already have court dates, the city's.
But now, the, the judge is the one who is, uh, makes the court date, because I asked all those questions already, and they were asked, asked, answered by the court administrator, so, uh.
But I know that, I know she has her National Guard obligation. How does that affect her availability? What is her obligation to Arlington? I would certainly be glad to talk with her.
Well, like I said, that's why we have associate judges to fill in for when she's, has to miss court, right? Ain't that what the associate judges are for? Or am I confused with that one?
I've been treating this kind of like the, uh, employment opportunity. I mean, at least for the fairness of other people in the city that might be in the, the, uh, capabilities to do this, maybe we should open it up citywide, just in fairness, and then if we don't get any other applicants, then, fine, go for it.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem either way.
No, I, I just would at least, and I agree with you, Sandra, I'd like to at least meet Judge Lane. I've never seen him either, thank goodness. But I, I would have no problem, I mean, if he wants to apply and she wants to apply, and to Chad's point, maybe there's someone else in the city that wants to apply. If we've never opened it up, we may have other citizens of Kennedale, and we can let them make a case to us, just to.
Okay, then I, I agree with that also. If somebody else in Kennedale wants to apply, let's open it up.
Well, let's do that as fast as we can, then. Let's get on that. Uh, we'll postpone the, uh, that off the consent agenda. And then, uh, George, I don't know how fast you guys can put something out there. Um, and we'll do some interviews.
So Drew, is that like, how does an interview for a judge work? Is that just like interviewing someone for a board, or is there a formal process required by the state?
No, there's no formal process, and actually, I've never, I don't think I've ever gone through the process of a council interviewing judges. I think you certainly can.
I've gone through the process. Actually, we were changing judges when I left Glen Heights. Um, and we, we actually went through the process of appointing a judge and appointing an associate judge at the same time for a period of two years. And so, uh, what we did essentially was, when the council decided to entertain other candidates, we, uh, reached out to some attorney's offices and asked if they had any recommendations or, um, anything like that. We reached out to a few people, and we set a deadline for applications, just like any other job application. And, um, once we received those, uh, once we knew who was interested, uh, we took their credentials to council, and council, uh, selected who they wanted to meet in person. And what we did was, one evening in a work session, um, the council interviewed judge candidates. And it was that simple.
Mayor, it's not really any different than the council interviewing for city attorney or city manager's position. Uh, I, I would suggest if you're going to go, uh, beyond reappointing the judge, that you at least open it for applications and give others the option to let you know whether they're interested or not, and then determine, looking at the applications and credentials, who you'd want to interview. And we can start that process. That's what we wanted.
Okay. Are you in agreement to start that process?
Yep.
Yes, yes.
All right, so, um, we have eight minutes, so why don't we just take eight minutes, take a break before the regular meeting, and then we'll do the regular meeting and then do, uh, executive session, George.
Okay, Mayor, I don't, I guess I was aware, Leslie, this agenda's supposed to move right into the regular meeting, is it not?
Correct.
Yeah, but I, I could, we could take a break.
You can.
I need a break. Yeah, let's, let's, let's take, uh, you know, let's come back at seven, that's six minutes, seven minutes from now.
All right, he's going to break. He evidently broke, and start seven.
Do we have Chris back? Yeah, there he is. All right, so we're gonna start the regular session. Leslie, we call the roll.
Sorry, Josh Altum. Chris Pugh. Chris, Mayor Pro Tim Lee.
Here.
Linda Rhodes.
Here.
Here.
Chad Wondell.
Here.
Mayor, they're all present.
First item up is the Citizen and Visitors Forum. I don't know if you have any citizens or visitors who want to discuss. All right, close that. Updates from council. Sandra.
Oh, I just wanted to say that on May 9th, I helped Trent with a food drive. And we raised a lot of money, supplies and food for senior outreach of Kennedale. So that was a great success. And I've been meeting with some of the ladies at Kennedale Senior Apartments. And so they are looking forward to that ramp being put in to help them be able to visit the park. Hopefully that'll happen soon for them. And that's about it for me.
Josh? How are those lights out there, Sandra? I don't really have much to update. I donated plasma twice this week. That was quite interesting. I will say that in our neighborhood, they're starting to put in the water meters. And if you look at your, your little water meter cover, you can see a little black, a little dome shaped deal. Well, pretty much our entire neighborhood already has the new meters in place, so. That's about it. All right, Linda?
No update.
All right, Chad?
Just grinding through and helping our farmers here lately. I don't know if anybody's aware of that kind of stuff. Farmers are struggling right now because of supply chain issues. And as far as what our company does is the sub filing logistics to help all that stuff. But believe it or not, we've actually managed this last month, put out a hundred billion tons of wheat.
Wow.
Crazy.
Chris?
I've also seen the smart meters going in in our neighborhood. So that's a good sign. Also, I helped distribute a few of the Shop Kennedale signs. I had some, I put some out for some people and then other people say, hey, where'd that come from? So I've tried to do what I can to help get that word out. And I want to express my appreciation of Melissa and her staff. I think it's a, we haven't had anything like that in a long time. So it was put together very quickly and has been very well received, and I appreciate that. And I've attended a few of the calls that we received invitations to as my schedule permits. Just trying to keep up with government response, government finances, and just to stay aware of what's going on with the COVID-19 issue.
All right, and then for me, first thing, we're gonna have a proclamation here. Recognizing Trenton Nichols for organizing a food drive to benefit the senior citizens of Canada during the COVID-19 pandemic. So I'm gonna read it here for you. Whereas Trenton Nichols was born December 27, 2007, and following the passing of his father was adopted by Matthew and Tamiko Sargent, and now resides in Canada where he just completed fifth grade at James A. Arthur Intermediate. And whereas Trent is a proud member of the NAACP and is always looking for new ways to be involved and to volunteer with his community. And whereas hunger and food insecurity are recognized as affecting people across North Texas, whereas Trent recognized that the COVID-19 pandemic might exacerbate food insecurity, especially amongst the senior citizens population. And whereas this young, inspiring young man took upon himself to organize and to facilitate a food drive to benefit those seniors who might be in need at this time. And whereas we are proud to have Trenton Nichols as a young leader in our community. Now therefore, I, Brian Johnson, and Mayor ProTosandra Lee, do proclaim today, which was Tuesday, May 19, 2020, as Trenton Nichols Day in the City of Kennedale. Thank you so much, Trenton, if you're watching this. It's sort of weird watching everybody clap with their mute on. So I've only been, I've been attending mayor's council meetings. We've been doing those virtually. I've also been attending the 911 board meetings. We're, we're due to go live with text 911 in July, July 1st. So that, you know, if you're ever caught in an active shooter situation or domestic violence, and you cannot get on the phone, you can still text quietly and get help.
Is there gonna be a campaign to let people know that service is available?
Yes, we're finishing up the educational materials and the training materials. Originally, in 2014, they said it'd be done by 2018, but we're finally getting it done in 2020. So that's good news.
Hop on that for a second. The reason I'm asking is if people don't know about that, texting when you're in a 911 situation is an amazing feature. You know, sometimes you have people that are in a position where they can't talk. Maybe they're under arrest, maybe they're a victim of domestic violence. Maybe they're in a situation where they might be harmed. And being able to text 911 is an incredible leap forward. And I'm glad Tarrant County and the mayor and the board have moved forward with that.
Yeah, it's been really the work of the Arlington and Grand Prairie Fire and Police Chiefs that really are pushing this. And so we're happy to get it done. All right, updates for the city manager.
Mayor, I have none at this point. Thank you.
Financial reports.
Good evening.
Hello.
Again, so the financials for the month of April. We, our general fund revenue is at 82%, and that is really good. This time last year, we were at 79%. So we are tracking along right now, just as we thought we would be in the general fund. I know the big question is probably gonna be, you know, what are we projecting as far as sales tax due to COVID-19? The short answer to that is that we don't know right now. When the city receives its sales tax every month, it's basically sales tax that was received two months prior. So the month-to-date that you see on the April financials, that was what was recorded in April, but that is for sales tax from February. So we're waiting to see results from what occurred in April, though that will be on the June financials. The great thing about any of it is that the city has already started to do some projections on where we think we'll end up with sales tax and every other revenue source that we have. We originally budgeted a revenue of 6.9 million. And current projection, and you'll get all of this next month when we bring forth the budget amendment, but current projections are 6.825. So we're, we're not too far behind. That is even taken into account a 10% decrease in sales tax that we may possibly experience due to COVID-19. Now, no one knows what that's going to be. Whenever we budget for sales tax, we don't know what it's gonna be. But we do our best to project, project forward. In my group with the GFAT, a lot of the cities our size are going ahead and anticipating a 10% reduction in sales tax. And so that's basically all I've applied so far for fiscal year '20. So applying that, we actually budgeted to get 1.402 million in sales tax in the general fund. And I'm projecting 1.369. And that is with the 10% reduction. Now, of course, we're gonna continue monitoring that after the June financials. And those last couple of months are kind of gonna be the ones that are gonna tell the real tale about where we're going, sales tax wise. But I don't anticipate much worse than that. Another thing that is gonna be great news moving forward is that, as you are aware, we presented the CAFR at a prior meeting for fiscal year '19. And we did, in the year '19, better, much better than we thought we would. One of the main reasons that you'll see for that is because for fiscal year '19, we budgeted sales tax to be 1.275 million. Well, we actually received 1.77 million. So that is where a lot of the difference takes place. As you can remember, for fiscal '19, we budgeted to have a $636,000 drawdown or fund balance. And we did not draw down the fund outs. We had a surplus of 102,000. We had a tiny surplus, but we had a surplus. We didn't draw it down. And so that drastically helped improve the fund balance. For fiscal '19, when we started the budget, we thought that we started with a fund balance of 1.1 million in the general fund. Well, after the audit, we learned that we started with 1.597. Pretty much the difference in that is gonna be the difference in the sales tax. And so that is really what helped us out significantly for fiscal '19. And we know as a result, that then, that then carries over into fiscal '20, our current budget. And what you'll see when we bring the financials forward after the amendment, you'll see that difference in how it carries forward. Now, for fiscal '20, as you can see in your financials, we know that we budgeted to draw the fund balance down, again, for fiscal '20, of course. But we, for the projection, we expect to draw it down a lot less. We budgeted to draw it down by 862,000. What the projection is looking like right now is that we may reduce that by about 200,000. But, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be keeping an eye on it. And hopefully we'll have some more solid numbers to present once we bring the budget amendment next month. But as for right now, we budgeted to, in fiscal '19, with 15.52% fund balance. As of the end of the audit, we had 24%. That's a lot better. We know that our policy costs were between 15% to 25% of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And it feels really good to have, to end it the year at 24% versus 15%. For fiscal '20, we thought we were gonna budget, well, we originally budgeted for 7.94% of fund balance in the general fund. And the way the projection is going now, it looks about 13%. Now, that's still below our policy, but it's a lot better than what we reported to the rating agencies when we were reviewed a few months back. So when we spoke to them before, they let us know that they probably come back and review us again in the next 18 months or so. I'm pretty sure they're gonna be pleased with the improvement that we made from fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20. So that's basically what's going on in the general fund. If you look at the other major funds, we're pretty much on track with budget. Water Fund, Drainage Fund, some of the capital projects funds. Those are basically the highlights that I have. Again, we plan to bring a budget amendment in June to show us the real projections of what we're looking at for all of our revenue sources. Again, if you were wondering about the difference between what we budgeted and what we're projecting in the general fund, we budgeted 6.19 million in revenue. Current projection is 6.825, a little bit less, but not bad, because we're also projecting about 300,000 less on the expenditure side. So again, we'll be bringing that for really soon, but now it's looking a lot better than what we thought it would, thanks to the outcome of the audit. That's really all the highlights that I have. I can take any questions if there are any.
Any questions, Sandra?
No.
Josh? I'm sorry. Linda?
No, thank you.
Chad?
No.
Chris?
I do have one question. So if we pass the motion to accept the funding through the CARES Act, Lakita, do you have any idea what the expenditures of the city that could be reimbursed are at this point out of the 427,000 that the county has allocated for the City of Kennedale?
Not at this time. I know George has a plan to kind of get everyone together tomorrow to talk about that. And so I don't really have a number to tie to it at this moment.
Lakita, my question is that that's a pretty big jump on the sales taxes. Do we know what caused that jump? I mean, that's, you know, you're talking almost $500,000, it sounds like.
Yep.
I mean, I don't, I don't think we can say what businesses it are right here, but.
No.
No.
So what, no, we cannot, you know, definitely, I, I do plan to request a confidentiality report from the Comptroller's Office to take a closer look at it. But yeah, you're right, it is almost 500,000. I think probably 50% of it has to do with trying to be conservative and not planning to over-budget and risk having a deficit in that area. And the other half of it, I'm not really sure at this time. Now, I can tell you that some of it was due to a, a one-time payment that the city received that January. And it was due to, I believe, something that the comptroller found through a sales tax audit that was owed to the City of Kennedale. So that was probably a little bit of an anomaly.
Payment. Sandra, how many times have we heard that? The one-time tax payment from the county.
Well, I guess my question is too, the follow-up is how often do we do a sales tax audit to make sure that we are getting all our sales taxes?
From what I understand, the city has, has been working with an agency that, that does ongoing sales tax audit for the city. So from what I understand, as anything is found, you know, the city is able to recoup what is owed or will have to pay back what is, what we owe someone else. So as I understand, it's ongoing. There's an agency that the city contracted with years ago to, to, to look for these things. And as I understand, they're still doing that for us.
Because the comptroller sometimes sends our sales tax money to somebody else, right?
Absolutely. That happens all the time. And it happens with most cities. And so that's why you employ someone to go and scope these things out, and you pay them a percentage of what they find.
Any other questions for Lakita? No? Well, thank you very much. That was very informative. Next up is, next up is, wow. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. We're going to remove item one, ordinance 698. But for the rest of the consent agenda, does anybody want to remove anything off the rest of the consent agenda? If not, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number one.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number one.
I'll second. Leslie, will you take a roll call then?
Josh Altum.
Yay.
Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Pro Tim Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wondell. Mayor passes unanimously.
All right, next thing is the consideration of item one. Approval of ordinance 698, reappointing Judge Bill Linton, Billin. I think we discussed in the work session of postponing. I think we discussed in the work session of postponing that until we can look for applicants. Do I have a motion to postpone until we can apply for applicants and interview possible candidates?
I'll make a motion that we postpone this item and that we interview and advertise for potential applicants for city judge.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Leslie, will you take the vote?
I'm Josh Alton.
Yay.
Chris Pugh?
Yay.
Mayor Prosimly?
Yay.
Linda Rhodes?
Yay.
Chad Wondell?
Yay.
Mayor, the post foment passes unanimously.
All right, next up, items for individual consideration. Consider approval of ordinance six oh nine, amending the Kennedale City Code by amending facility schedule fees of section two dash three, fees for licenses, inspections, permits, et cetera, by amending fees in our previous check and credit card transactions, facility rentals and reservations, library registration, miscellaneous permits, planning and development, utility building, public works and water and wastewater fees related to liquid waste, water and sewer taps, and other public construction inspection, fire department, and public information at request. First thing we'll do is we'll get Melissa to give us a, a background.
So this, the staff did a comprehensive look at the fee schedule, which we've not done for quite some time, with the exception of a few changes for development fees a few months ago. A lot of these changes were updates and cleaning up some of the language or repetitive wording. As an example, fathom is mentioned in here. And just really trying to make it easy for both the customer and staff to, to read and interpret fees. Some of these, though, or a lot of them, were to basically recover costs that the city spends for various services. Fire Department has a number of added fees on there for services they provide, they provide that they've not charged for in the past. And James is here and can speak to that. We also, on the tap fees, water and sewer tap fees, but that we would charge the actual cost for those taps. We've had situations where the developer pays a minimal fee and Arlington charges a much, much larger fee. And what happens is the city of Kennedale ends up paying that cost. So really, it's just to pass on the cost to that developer or that user of those services. So we've got, and I think there's some utility fees coming as well that we still need to look at, that you may be seeing in the next thirty or sixty days. But this was an attempt to kind of go through and comprehensively update the fee schedule. And the very staff are here for specific questions for those departments.
All right, the first thing before we move on is that we will those people wishing, people have three minutes. I'll let the timer, since I can find my stopwatch. And let me find here, I know I had on my chat Joe Palmer wishing to speak. Let me find Joe on my list here. One moment, one moment. I know he's here, I saw him earlier. Joe, you still there?
Yes, yeah.
All right, go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you for the time. Thanks for taking up this agenda item. My comments are similar to the comments I shared with you on the permit schedule fee, permit schedule increases that you voted on several months ago. I would just start off with a plea to let people keep more of their own money. At first, when I looked at your, your agenda packet, I did not see any line items in the fee schedule that would indicate an increase over what they are currently or what, what they have been. How's the audio?
It's good, keep going.
I got a problem on my end. So like I was saying, I don't see any indication on your packet of any increases, line item increases. And several months ago, when you voted on the permit schedule increase, there were, it was highlighted in red, red rose, I believe, to indicate the increases that people could expect to see, that council members could expect to be voting on. I thought they were all the same, but then I believe it was council member, one of the council members stated that you are going to start charging for things that you didn't charge before. The fire chief also said that you're going to start charging for things you didn't charge before. I don't think, I think a lot of people, if they knew that city staff was going out hunting around for higher rates in other cities in order to justify maximizing it here, I don't think they would be happy with that. I don't think that's the appropriate rate to run a city. If there's a city in the state of Texas where things are a little bit cheaper than neighboring cities, I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. I think that that's a, that's something to encourage people to move there, especially if you have somebody looking for a house and they're discerning enough of a person to research fees and permit schedule. That's the kind of person you want in your city. So regarding council member Lee's and council member Rhodes' suggestion to make an exemption for people who are of a certain age, senior citizens or handicapped or disabled, rather, I think that's great. You know, if you're only going to collect twelve thousand eight hundred dollars initially from this increased schedule, why don't just give everybody a break? Why do you have to increase every single thing that people pay for in the city? You have to nickel and dime people to death how much of their money belongs to them and how much of it belongs to the city? It's a fair question. You know, cities, do they suffer as a result of a pandemic? I guess they do, but who makes up the city? The people who live there. They need those dollars. They need those cents. That's my comment, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I don't think we have anybody else wanting to speak, anybody else popping up? Then I will close the public hearing and then ask for staff response. Chief Brown, I think there was a comment made about comparing it to other cities. Can you address that? Especially for the fire department?
Yes, sir. You know, as I had mentioned, there's a lot of different stuff that we do, that we respond to. And when we start evaluating this, we look at comparative, right? What do the other cities charge? What is fair and equitable from one location to the next? And that's what, that's what we're presenting with this. If our neighboring cities are paying for a certain service, we're looking at the same thing to be compensated in a similar manner. So when I looked at this, I reached out to a lot of other neighboring cities to see what their fee structures look like, see what they charge for and what they did not. I, what I've got in here is definitely not what every city does. There's a lot of stuff that we didn't put on here that I thought we did not need to capture. But there is a, there's a lot of items on here that would be the norm for what we need to address and charge for, so.
Council, do you have any questions for staff? Sandra? Comment?
My, my question was, when you use a credit card to pay your utility bill, why is it more if you pay it online or by phone than it is if you pay it in person with a credit card? I thought I saw that somewhere in the.
It is.
I mean, from a business standpoint, Sandra, we get charged fees and percentages based on online. So a lot of it has to do with the online processing center where those are grabbed. I know that that's how it is for my business. I actually pay a cheaper rate when somebody in person swipes their card than I do if I key it in or if that comes to the internet because I have a better ability to identify fraud and sorts. So the risk is lower on the transaction for the credit card company. That's how it is in my business, but.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
I didn't know that either, so.
My comment would be, Mayor, that we consistently have citizens asking us to spend their tax money diligently. And I don't think we should be subsidizing somebody. So I'll just make, if, if fee X is a thousand dollars and to do X costs two thousand dollars, then we're subsidizing the person who does X a thousand dollars. So I think it's only fair that if somebody does X, that we charge them whatever that costs. I, I think that's fair and I think that's good stewardship of our money. And if, that means if a business or a citizen has to pay more, they're paying what it costs. It's, I think there's many of those fees that say, you know, this amount of money or the actual cost, whichever is greater. And I think that's protecting the assets that we have by charging people what it actually costs us to accomplish these things, whether it's meter tapping or a fire inspection or a building permit. What it actually costs us to do it and that we should stop subsidizing, whether it's citizens or businesses, to, to accomplish those tasks. I think that's good stewardship of the tax dollars that we have.
Linda, did you have a question?
No, I don't, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, then I'll entertain a motion on ordinance six oh nine.
Six ninety nine?
Yeah, that's right, sorry, my glasses aren't that good.
I'll make a motion that we pass for the six ninety nine as written.
Further discussion? Leslie, will you call the roll?
Josh Alton?
Yay.
Chris Pugh?
Yay.
Mayor Prosimly?
Yay.
Linda Rhodes?
Yay.
Chad Wondell?
Yay.
Mayor passes unanimously.
Item two, discussing, consider approval interlocal agreement with Tarrant County regarding the distribution of coronavirus aid relief Economic Security CARES Act funding to address COVID nineteen related expenses.
Mayor, this is an item I had sent you, I guess this morning, the interlocal agreement that we received from Tarrant County. This is funding that Tarrant County was awarded through CARES Act to distribute to cities within the county, within Tarrant County. And essentially, what the county has done, this, this is money that, when, when the state of Texas distributed their CARES money, they made direct contributions or direct disbursement to twelve counties and about six cities that exceeded five hundred thousand population. But then each of the counties who received their money are redistributing that money to cities that did not get direct allotments from the state of Texas. So essentially, what this interlocal agreement is that you have before you is the interlocal agreement where we're agreeing to accept our share of the, of the CARES funding that's intended to help compensate the city of Kennedale for programs we've implemented or costs that we have incurred directly related to coronavirus. And it has to be spent for expenses that we've incurred between March the first, I believe, and by December thirtieth. So the county has made the determination to disperse to all of the cities within the county the full allotment of five, fifty five dollars per capita, which results for the city of Kennedale based upon our twenty nineteen population estimate that's made by the council of governments of a contribution or a distribution to the city of Kennedale of four hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now, that money, once we approve the interlocal agreement, would be distributed to the city of Kennedale and it will then be our obligation to provide reports to, back to the county on a periodic basis of what we, expenses we have incurred and how we've spent that money consistent with the county's guidelines and the guidelines of the Treasury Department. So we would recommend that the county accept this interlocal agreement, understand that we're going to have to make sure that what we submit as justification for the expenditures that we make from that money and it will be accounted for separately from any other city money will be spent for COVID-related objects or expenses. And to the extent that the city of Kennedale is not able to fully justify the expense of the four, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that money, any, any balance that cannot be justified under the guidelines would eventually be returned to the county and perhaps to the Treasury Department. So our goal and our objective, and we'll be meeting in some detail about this tomorrow morning, in fact, is to determine that we have the right mechanisms to track and, and account for all of the money and that we've identified every expense that is coronavirus-related that qualifies under the CARES Act. But this is a first major step in receiving some of the reimbursement for those programs. And I want to take just a minute to commend the county judge and the commissioner's court because the state of Texas and the distributions that they're making in the two hundred and fifty four counties that didn't qualify for direct contributions is to determine the fifty five dollar per capita amount and then allocate twenty percent of that to those jurisdictions and have them then reapply as they exceeded those needs. The county has, in a partnership that we've had, a good working relationship throughout this COVID disaster and crisis, has made the determination that they will award and distribute the full fifty five dollars per capita to each of the jurisdictions. And then that, that we cannot manage appropriately and justify would eventually be returned for redistribution to areas that might have a greater need within the county. I would also point out that in addition to that money, the county has also allocated some of their direct contribution for other things, some rent assistance for some economic stimulus, some of which may also come to the Kennedale community as a result of the COVID disaster. So in my opinion, this is a very good thing. The commissioner's court has taken an aggressive action to be sure that the money is used at the local level to get to the individuals and the businesses that need the assistance as a result of COVID nineteen. We would recommend your approval of this interlocal agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the interlocal agreement.
I make a motion.
Go ahead, Sandra.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just, well, not really a question, but maybe a statement. If it's correct to say that council of governments gets their population numbers from the census record, census reporting, this is just another example of the high importance of every person being counted out there because this is money in our pocket and our city coffers. So I just wanted to make that little statement.
Can I, can I ask a question?
No.
I received a call today from someone asking about Kennedale Senior Center and when they reopen and the part of the kitchen that, that needs plexiglass. Will we be able to use those gloves or something like that? Or gloves and masks for the seniors?
Sandra, it's my opinion that we, that would be an eligible cost. It would be a cost and expense that we could use for coronavirus-related and to protect participants in the senior center from the disease.
Excellent, thank you.
Qualify, yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment that I know, you know, Judge Whitley, he said, this money is burning a hole in my pocket. You know, Judge Whitley and the county commissioners have very willingly said, we want to help our communities. And I, I would like, you know, to publicly thank Judge Whitley and the county commissioners for their willingness to quickly distribute this money so that we can get it out and take care of our needs and the needs of the citizens of Tarrant County. Because they could very easily be dragging their feet. And Judge Whitley is like, let's get this out there, let's do the good we can as fast as possible. Let's help the most number of citizens we can, so. So I want to thank the county commissioners and Judge Whitley for their, their quick action to get this money dispersed and out to the communities as quickly as possible.
I'm sure most of you, Mayor, most of you, if I could, probably also receive, but our commissioner Devon Allen has also been very aggressive in keeping us apprised of what the commissioner's court is doing and what's available in offering her assistance. So she specifically for this, I think, has been incredibly cooperative.
Alright, so Leslie, you want to do a roll call vote?
Josh Alton.
Yay.
Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Prosimly.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
And Chad Wondell.
Yay.
Mayor passes unanimously.
Alright, next item is hold a public hearing, considered adoption of order, order number six eighty-six, amending chapter twenty-three, article, uh, on the stormwater drainage utility system by amending the monthly stormwater drainage utility fee from three fifty to four fifty for residential units or religious organizations. Public, I mean, staff report.
Mayor, Lakita Sutton is going to present this public hearing to the council. Thank you.
Mayor, as you and the council are aware, um, our, uh, the current fee is three dollars and fifty cents and we are bringing this forward to the council tonight to increase that by one dollar. We, this idea has been talked about for several years. The last increase was in two thousand fourteen and as a part of the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, um, we talked about increasing it by the dollar to, not only be comparable with other cities, but as we know that we have needs as far as drainage and erosion issues in the city and the extra thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue would definitely be needed. And we are further along in the year, so if we approve the ordinance tonight, um, the, the three dollars and fifty cent would increase to four dollars and fifty cent affected June first. And residential customers and religious organizations will begin seeing that on their utility bill starting June first. We have also included in the council report several other cities and what they're currently charging. Just to remind the council that we did in the past say that we were going to come back and, and increase it by fifty cents per year to help get us up to where we need it to be. And we have not done that and so we are trying to meet our budget plan and in addition to bringing in some additional revenue for storm drainage. So we are asking the council to review the ordinance and pass. Our recommendation is to pass the ordinance and I can answer any questions if you have any.
I just want to touch base with Larry Hoover. Larry, how many stormwater drainage projects do we have and how underfunded are those?
Mayor, I don't know if, if Larry has an actual number of projects. But I can tell you that the, the drainage fund does need excess funds in its fund balance. While the drainage fund did begin the year with one point one million of fund balance, those funds are restricted, at least ninety percent of them. And so we are looking at under two hundred thousand dollars in, in available fund balance in the drainage fund. So that gives you an idea of what stands.
I just wanted Larry to give an idea for those people listening that there are numerous projects out there that are stormwater drainage fee related.
Mayor, I don't remember the exact number of projects. I know when we started the drainage fee back in its inception that there were thirty million dollars worth of projects identified and that was about ten years ago. So if you add inflation to that, you could probably say there's anywhere fifty to sixty million dollars of projects that could be done or need to be done.
Alright. Any questions? Well, I'll come back to you in a minute, Lakita. Let me open the public hearing. Again, public hearing, you'll have about three minutes. I'll keep my stopwatch here. I see that Palmer has signed up to speak. Let me find him. He's already, he's unmuted. Go ahead and start, Jeff.
I'm unmuted. I see that my camera's been cut off. I don't care about that. But, you know, in the future, when people want to participate in a meeting, you could let them participate fully by letting them have video.
Let me hold you off for a second there, Jeff. We didn't cut your video off. All I saw was it popped up, and let me stop the stopwatch. I saw that your camera's thing was coming up saying it was a different type of camera. That's what was cutting it off. We didn't cut you off.
Okay, like I said, future reference, like for me, no big deal. I just want to be able to communicate for that. I'm grateful. And thanks for adhering to five five one oh oh seven of the local government code for this meeting tonight. Regarding the fee schedule increase, I made some points earlier. Those points still stand. Hopefully they have more impact if I make them a second time during this three minutes than they did earlier. You know, you're, you were projecting six hundred sixty thousand dollars in drawdown. You actually are looking at a hundred two thousand dollars in surplus. You're only off by five hundred forty thousand dollars. I guess we're grateful that you didn't make the mistake in the other direction. But my point of bringing that up is why don't you take some of that money and put towards storm drain water, drainage and stormwater funds? That way you don't have to increase people's rates. Let me just ask you this. What fees, fines or permits cost, can you guarantee the people of this city that you will not increase in the next year or two years or five years? Or as Councilman Pugh references, six years as several years? And I would contest that. I would say that six years ago is the last increase is not several years ago. That's not enough reason to justify increasing. And, you know, what's wrong with having a city in Tarrant County where other cities can look to and say, "Look how inexpensive they are. Look how easy they are on their people. Why don't we try to emulate them?" Why doesn't it work that way? Why does everybody look at who's higher and continue to ratchet up and ratchet up so that it's more expensive just to live? And the city attorney made a point, service areas must be consistent. This isn't applicable to the suggestion for seniors to get a discount. They already have exemptions on property taxes, property appraisals for seniors, veterans, et cetera. So, you know, that's, that's not applicable. You know, you've got the money to go ahead and pay for stormwater. And my final point is, you know, if you don't want your storm drain water drainage fee fund to suffer, try spending it responsibly. Try spending it on things that are relevant. Instead of spending it money, spending that money on things that are not related to storm water and drainage.
You've got a minute left.
I'm going to give you the rest of your time back. Thanks. Deal back.
Thank you. Alright, staff response. Lakita, if I'm not mistaken, real quickly, stormwater drainage fee money has to be used on stormwater drainage fee projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Our drainage fee is its own fund and it's not, it does not act in the same way as the general fund. The comment was about the surplus that we ended up with in the general fund. We do not spend that on storm drainage projects. And then also the stormwater fund and the water funds are proprietary funds. They are not a general fund. They're proprietary. They are meant to make income. And while we are not trying to directly compete with any other city, we're just basically looking at the needs of this city.
If I could comment, just so that for the council's benefit. Clearly, the fees that we charge are behind curve and they're intended to help us in raise revenue or earn revenue to do drainage projects that are much more expensive than we have funds to do. When we go to other cities and make that comparisons, it's so we can answer the question because we'll be asked. It's not to seek out a reason to have a higher fee. It is to demonstrate that our cost and our reason for needing an increase is not exceeding that which the market normally is accustomed to and is not out of range with other similar municipalities. It's a comparison we make to be sure we're covering all the bases in justifying our own costs that we have identified. And clearly, we're behind that curve by a long shot.
Sandra, you have any questions?
Yeah. It was said that ninety percent is restricted. Why is that restricted, Lakita?
If you look in the caper, it, it lists footnotes of things that prior, that this council or prior council have allocated those funds for. They are probably some of the, the projects that were on the list that we reviewed in the, in the work session. So they're basically, what it's basically saying is that part is restricted. It's already allocated for something, specifically drainage projects. But that still comes nowhere close. You know, if you're looking at one point one million in total fund balance and only about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand worth of available fund balance that still nowhere touches, you know, the over thirty, that thirty million worth of drainage projects that we have.
Right. And I just asked because I know somebody was going to ask me, so I have an answer. So thank you.
It's always good to have an answer. I need to close the public hearing. Linda, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Chad?
Hey Larry, what would you say the average lifespan of a stormwater project is? We put it in the ground and we can expect it to last X amount of years before repair or replace.
Some of that depends upon the, the materials you're installing. For instance, if you're installing RCP pipe, that's reinforced concrete pipe. Typically you get forty to sixty years out of that installation. Other products get longer. Now, if we're talking open channels that are subject to higher flows and more erosivity, erosivity, that, you know, any type of environmental action, rain, storms, earthquake, whatever, could shorten that lifespan. So it varies by product and by application.
Larry, is erositivity an actual word?
Yes, and I fumbled that greatly.
I, I never heard that word before. Chris, questions?
Hold on.
Oh, Chad, go back.
And then out of the city's stormwater and erosion control systems, about what percentage of those systems would you say are in desperate need of repair?
I'd say eighty percent of the city is open ditches and channels. And those need a great deal of attention. We're fortunate in that most of the new subdivisions are about fifteen years old or younger. And all that new RCP pipe and stuff that's been put in is in great shape. What we need to deal with is the main channels, Winding Creek, Kennedale Creek, Village Creek, those channels and deal with the, the whole region's drainage system from the bottom up.
Chris?
Well, a couple of comments. You know, we, we have consistently heard citizens come in front of us about drainage issues and erosion issues or a combination of the two. And unfortunately, we cannot address those issues for free. We, we can't repair drainage issues at no charge. We can't repair sewer lines at no charge. And in conjunction with that is, according to Lakita and to Leslie, it's been six years since we've had an increase. What in the last six years has not had a price increase? There's a few things, but, but not many. So I think we're at the point where, you know, we have citizens coming in front of us saying, "I've had this drainage issue on my property for four years or five years or ten years. When are you going to do something about it?" And as a council and as a city, we're forced to try to find a way to fund, how do we fix that drainage issue? So it's a dollar a month. And, and not belittle Sandra's comment, but I don't know that a dollar a month is going to hurt anybody. I mean, maybe there's a few people that a dollar would, is tough. But I think when you look at the community as a whole, my dollar benefits some of the people in Old Town who have consistent flooding issues, much more than benefits myself. But that's part of being a community. Is each of us puts in our dollar, our fifty cents or our thirty-three cents for trash. And as a community, we benefit. And if we want to address some of these drainage issues that we have people coming in front of us who talk about it on a regular basis, we have to figure out a way. We have to seek ways to fund that. And if we haven't changed that fee in six years, I feel that the time has come for us to say, "Let's honor the commitment that was made six years ago." And let's increase that fee and, and give Larry and his team some funding to try to start solving some of these drainage and sewer issues as quickly as we can. And, and it's a dollar. I understand that. It's an increase. But it's an increase for me too. I live here. I pay the dollar. Everybody who's on this council lives in Kennedale and will all pay that dollar. But I know that that dollar to me is going to help some of those folks that have come in front of us saying, "I have drainage on my property."
Well, you know what? And I, Chris, I'm understanding completely what you're saying. And I wouldn't even care about paying five more dollars on my bill to help the city. But it's just some, some senior citizens out there that's really struggling and that dollar is going to make a difference. But, uh, you will hear my vote as a yay because it's needed. But I just think when it comes to seniors who have worked their whole life and are in the situations they, during the day that, you know, it's just, it's just hard unless you are seeing them on a daily basis, you know, asking for food. "When am I going to get my next meal?" Then that dollar is a lot to them. So.
And I respect that, Sandra. I do. I truly do. I just, I feel like we have to look at what's, what's best for all seventy-five hundred citizens of Kennedale. And, you know, Councilman Rhodes asked, we go back and maybe look at offsetting the other dollar. I'm not opposed to that. But I think we need to, you said last month, we gotta start doing things. And we can't let Larry do some things if we don't give him some funding.
Well, you know what? And maybe we get rid of recycling and we can really hike up the, uh, the fee. I, you know, because a lot of people don't recycle, so if we take that money away, then we can hike up the other part a little higher and then we'll have plenty of money to get some work done. That's just my view.
Well, I, I'm gonna, you know, with, with this fee, when we, if, if you'd seen Sandra's post last night and she was, or this morning when she was driving around at four in the morning, is that a lot of these repairs need to be done in the older parts of Texas. You know, we don't need to be doing it in Sandra's neighborhood or my neighborhood. But it's in those neighborhoods that Sandra was driving through that a lot of this work needs to be done. And too often, we've seen that most of the, the good work has been done on, on the west side of two eighty-seven, east side of two eighty-seven and not the west side or, or around the areas that you were talking about, Sandra, that we really need to start tackling.
Right.
Old Town needs some love, Brian. I would agree with you.
Just on the numbers side of this thing, Larry, you said we have approximately, not including the inflation, thirty million dollars worth of projects in the ground right now that need attention, correct?
Those were identified when the study, thirty million dollars worth of projects. They weren't engineered and designed to the dollar, but they were estimates. So I would say you have well over thirty billion dollars.
Okay. And then if, if we just divide that over the average lifespan of the product of, you said roughly forty years, that means we should be spending seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to keep those systems managed. Not, that's not even adding on or building on new. So with that, Lakita, what are we currently collecting a year in stormwater fees?
Give me one second.
Because just going to gross number crunch, adding what you, the thirty-eight thousand times four and a half, which is about one seventy-two.
Um, currently, so for, for three years in a row, we, we collected two hundred, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in drainage fees. And so.
A third of what we should be collecting to, to maintain the life cycle of a forty-year product. I mean, if I was a cash business, I would definitely be wanting to collect enough revenues to maintain my systems that keep the, 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 the idea of moving forward and at least keeping it maintained so that, like, I just saw a notice coming on my phone that Michigan just had a dam rupture. Well, fortunately, we don't have a dam in the city, but, I mean, we'd be looking at situations like that where you can only let these things go for so long before their failure can be catastrophic. And if we don't have the funds to repair those, then you put yourself in a situation where either catastrophic property damages occur and then the city's out even more money for reimbursement and compensation for failed, you know, city services. Or we just, we just can't keep up with the maintenance cost on what we have in the ground.
Well, if you remember, the stormwater drainage fee was, uh, actually, uh, the brainchild of Richard Nixon under the Clean Water Act, and actually started to hit Kennedale by 2010 that we were now subject to. So, uh, Richard Nixon, uh, way back in 72, uh, began this program. All right, without any other questions, well, wait.
Nope. That was all I had to say.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 686.
I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we pass 686.
I second.
Any further discussion from council?
Just would like to note that we should come back pretty darn quick to get the exemption rolled into our senior program.
Okay. Leslie, will you take the, uh, vote?
And Josh Alton?
Yay.
And your dogs don't count, Josh.
Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Pro Tim Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wando.
Yay.
Mayor, it passes unanimously.
All right, next item is hold a public hearing, consider approval ordinance of 700, granting to Atmos Energy Corporation, Texas and Virginia Corporation, the successors and assigns a franchise to construct, maintain, and operate pipelines and equipment in the city of Kennedale, Tarrant County, for the transportation, delivery, and sale of gas in and out through said, for all purposes.
Thank you, Mayor. Lakita, would you brief them?
Sure. Mayor and council, recently, the city was approached by Atmos Energy to update our franchise agreement. Essentially, um, there is no change, um, in the agreement other than extending it until, um, year 2030. The, the stipulation is, is that they pay, um, the city 5% of gross revenues. And that is actually the maximum that, um, that any city can charge, um, a gas company, uh, 5% of their gross receipts. Um, it's basically just for the same service. The, the company has infrastructure in our right of ways, um, which enables them to do business. And so this is the city reaping our portion of that. Though our agreement that was in place did expire in December of 2017, we have collected those fees just the same, um, even after it expired. And so recently, we were just approached to go ahead and get it updated. So we had our city attorney to work with Atmos, um, and come up with, uh, the new agreement, which is actually the ordinance that's in front of you this evening.
Any questions for Lakita?
Yeah, Lakita, is it, is it 10-year agreement or for Drew, is it 10-year agreement standard? Does that, that seems like a long agreement considering we've changed the franchise fee within the last three years just in the city of Kennedale.
Yeah, well, my experience, they are, they are pretty long usually. And this is, this is 10 years and it's, there's oppor, opportunities for two, five-year renewals. Your charter prohibits, uh, anything longer than 20 years. But typically, yeah, when I see these, they're, they've got a pretty lengthy duration.
Yes, I agree with the same, Chris. Normally, they, they're pretty long. Some of the other, um, utilities are, I've seen longer than that. So, um, I believe it's normal as well.
I think, I think the agreement that expired was for longer than that. And the proposal that Atmos provided to us was for, I, I believe, something like 20 or 25 years. The city attorney's office was negotiating us, uh, an agreement that would be similar for all of the customer cities. And I think got that period reduced from what Atmos was originally asking for. But 10 is rel, really a relatively short time in a lot of instances for a utility company.
Thanks, thanks to all three of you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 700.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Mayor, the public hearing.
Uh, hang on. I have no one asked to speak during the public hearing. So I will close the public hearing. Now make a motion.
I still move, Mayor, to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, Leslie, we take the roll call?
Josh Alton.
Yay.
Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Pro Tim Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wando.
Yay.
Mayor, it passes unanimously.
All right, uh, the last thing we had was an executive session listed in case we needed it. I just wanted to check, um, if, I don't think Drew has anything new, but if anybody wants to go in executive session, uh, please, um, let me know. No? Then, there was nothing new at all. No movement? No. There's no new information. All right, if that's, you know, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I mean, I, I have a second.
Second.
Would you please take the roll, Leslie?
Josh Alton. Josh Alton, yes. All right. Uh, Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Pro Tim Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wando.
Yay.
Mayor, it passes unanimously. I think Josh already left us.
I'll try to get the amended ordinance of a camp by next Tuesday for the seniors.
All right.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.